I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Wednesday, June 9th, 2021. Please stand and pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Noting of the roll, please.
Noted.
With the approval of the agenda, I'd like to make two amendments to that. I'd like to add 11B gypsy moths under 11B unfinished business, and I'd like to remove item number seven. We do not have a public hearing tonight.
Okay, with those amendments, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by Trustee Dunn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, hearing none. We have an agenda. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Ferrari, a second by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Roll call, please.
Trustee Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright.
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Okay, item six. Public comment on items not on the agenda. So, any public like to speak about items that are not on the agenda tonight? Yes, sir. Come on up to the microphone. Please state your name and address.
My name is Charles Devlin. I live at 1129 Kebbell Lane, and I'd like to find out where I can get a copy of the agenda, so I would know whether I want to comment on something that's not on the agenda.
Okay. Charlie, they're posted out in front?
They are.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go out and get one. I'll be right back.
Well, it's posted in there for you to copy. There's a copy up on the counter back there, I think.
Sounds good.
And we, I know we do post it on Facebook, and it's on the Village message board also.
Thank, I'm not a big computer guy, but thank you very much.
Yep. Is there any other public comment? I shouldn't be answering your questions in public comment, otherwise it's an agenda item, but I thought it'd help him out. Yes, sir. Brian?
Good evening. Brian Cloutier, Director of the Oxford Public Library. I think it's probably been about a year since I've stood before you, and we've been on quite a journey between then and now. That being said, I just want to let everybody know that the library is pretty much fully open at this point. We've been open to the public since June of last year, but we've only in the most recent weeks started relaxing, increasing our occupancy limits within our facility, relaxing the mask mandate for both staff and patrons who are fully vaccinated, opening up our quiet study rooms. We are starting to take reservations for bookings for our community room for meetings that will commence after July 1. And we're gearing up for what we hope will be a fairly normal summer reading program. So we have summer reading programs scheduled for our adult, youth, and teen departments with a whole lineup of events that you can see in our newsletter, or you can visit our website at www.miopl.org. The other reason I'm here this evening is I just want to remind you that my board will be meeting a week from tonight at 7:00 at the library. And the one item that we have on our, we have other than paying the bills and normal business, the item that we'll be taking up is the ballot resolution for the proposed library bond issue that will go on the ballot in November. That resolution, pending, all goes well, will be approved by my board a week from tonight. At that point, that resolution will come to you for your authorization to get it on the ballot. I know it's not customary protocol to answer any questions, but since I am a department head of yours, I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Okay. I have no questions, Brian.
Hearing none. It's just good to see your faces again, and you know where to find me. So if you have anything that you need me to help you with, remember I am your librarian, and I'm more than happy to assist you with any questions you might have, or any research you have as well. So, thank you. It's good to be back.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak on items not on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Tom Totuff, 588 South Bay Road. I'd like if the township board would consider putting on the agenda of adult use marijuana growth and sales in the area. It's going on, been going on, will go on, so see if they can control it a little bit better than what it might be, and see what we can do. And again, adult use, recreational marijuana for growth and sales.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other public comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to item number eight, which was, will now be seven. It's the first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment for medical marijuana. I have Hans Rentrapp, the attorney that put together our ordinance. The ordinance was put together because we have several problems or situations we're trying to prevent and help with. Number one, medical marijuana caregivers can have five additional patients growing upwards of 72 medical marijuana plants for medicine. The only way that we can help them is to put them in areas where there is electric without decimating the grid in residential areas. So, we came up with an ordinance to put it into an area that is sufficiently supplied with electrical power, sufficiently supplied with areas of zoning that takes care of ventilation and all the shipping and all the stuff that goes on with the medical marijuana. So, Hans, if you want to talk about the ordinance, please.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hans Rentrapp. I'm an attorney with Atkins, Need Allen &amp; Rentrapp. I have been involved in the marijuana issues since they got started in '08, one way or another, in terms of the regulation thereof. I was asked to put together an ordinance for you, which the Planning Commission saw in May regarding the regulation of marijuana. As a starting point, I wanted to be clear, I think there was some miscommunication at some point along the way, that this ordinance does not allow dispensaries and/or commercial marijuana. It does essentially two things overall. One, it reiterates your prohibitions to the extent you're lawfully allowed to do that. And two, it allows you to regulate what you cannot prohibit under law. So marijuana is a tricky business right now because there's a lot of moving parts in its new law. There are three acts that govern its use. The Medical Marijuana Act, which was initiated in 2008, the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act of 2016, and the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, which is commonly known as the Recreational Act, which was, of course, 2018. The Facilities Act, the Medical Marijuana Facilities Act was designed following the Marijuana, Medical Marijuana Act to allow growing and caregiving. This was a supposed major industry, large grow operations with a significant investment on the part of the growers, dispensaries, whatnot. There were five categories anticipated, growers, processors, safety compliance facilities, provisioning centers, and secure transporters. This statute was a must opt-in, so in other words, if the community did not opt in to allow those types of commercial uses, people could not, no one could exercise their rights under them. The township did not opt in. The second one is the Recreational Act, which is what most people are most familiar about because it just happened fairly recently, last, you know, 2018. The Recreational Act generally legalizes marijuana in small amounts. In this particular act, you must opt out. Otherwise, they are allowed to engage in dispensaries, et cetera. The township has opted out on that. The third category, as I mentioned earlier, was the first one, the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. Now, this act has been the subject of quite a bit of litigation over the years and trying to figure out what the boundaries of it is. There were three primary cases involved in it. The first was a case called Turbique versus City of Wyoming, which one of the community, the City of Wyoming tried to completely prohibit marijuana, medical marijuana at all levels. The Michigan Supreme Court said, "No, you could not do that," but left in a little footnote that said, "We're not sure about zoning." That put everybody, all the attorneys at confusion as to what they can and can't do. The next case that came along was a case called York Township versus Miller. Our firm got involved in actually writing an amicus brief in support of York Township on this, and it involved the growing of marijuana and whether the municipalities could regulate the location and other zoning matters associated with marijuana. Not complete or prohibited, but regulated. While that case was pending for the Michigan Supreme Court, the case of Zerota versus Byron Township came up, which was, had similar fact patterns and similar issues about whether it could be zoned or not. For whatever reason, the Supreme Court took Byron up and not York, but ultimately came and made a decision in April of 2020 on Byron Township and York, and it was July of last year, saying that yes, you can regulate medical marijuana using your zoning powers. So, what's before you tonight is an ordinance that does just that. This ordinance is designed to, as Supervisor Curtis pointed out, give a location for medical marijuana growing operations to occur. You cannot regulate individuals. So in other words, an individual can grow up to 12 plants inside their home for the use of marijuana under medical treatment. Okay? You can't do anything about that. However, if a patient caregiver comes out, which is defined as a person who is authorized to grow marijuana on behalf of patients, caregiver can grow up to five patients himself, each one can have 12 plants, so that's 72 plants in total. The ordinance provides that occasion caregivers shall go to, be put in the industrial district where the facilities that Mr. Curtis, or that Jack Curtis mentioned are available, and limit that so it's not spread out throughout the community, and it's not, you know, you have the facilities and yet you're not imposing the smells and secondary consequences that are associated with it. I should point out that there are significant secondary consequences associated with large grow operations. I know of one community where you can literally drive past the industrial drive in your car and smell it. So, you know, that's usually the biggest complaint people have. It's smell, and it's also, they do tend to, if they're known about, most of them are very quietly located, but if you do know about them, they tend to be a site for crime and whatnot. So placing them in an industrial district where you can have the facilities to address it is a prudent decision. So the ordinance tonight, like I said, locates in an industrial district. If you have more than 12 plants, you must move to that district as a patient caregiver. Again, this does not authorize the general commercial growing, it's just allowing the patient caregivers on the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. It does include some special, it does require a special land use permit from the township. It also includes certain special provisions regarding this operation that may have to be satisfied to make it, such as keeping a log of who's coming and going, and things of that nature. And so, it's available should there be a question about the lawfulness of the operation that that information be available to the, to law enforcement and anyone else in doing inspections. It also does call for certain inspections, and it mirrors many of the requirements for locked facilities and things of that nature. The ordinance also does specifically restate that you not opt in to the Facilities Act, and you did opt out of the Recreational Act. So all the commercial provisions are listed there as well, so you haven't changed anything in terms of that regard. I want to remind, one other thing I want to remind you of is that this is, all that continues to change. And what I say today may not be the same in a year or two from now. It is, we've seen decisions come down regularly that constantly changes. As it is now, I'm confident that the ordinance that's before you tonight is valid and enforceable. And I think it will stay that way in terms, we've always been allowed, you can have free speech, but we have certain restrictions on how you can say free speech. You can't say free speech, you know, yell fire in a crowded building, for example. I think this is the same kind of regulation that you have here, where you allow it, but you allow it with certain conditions. I did want to mention two items that probably should be addressed. One, I wasn't sure, I did mention it at the Planning Commission, I wasn't sure that had been changed, and that was just in regards to the general numbering of this township's zoning ordinance. There is a provision which references section 5.34, excuse me, 5.35, and I think that was intended to listen to 5.34. And there's, because our ordinance is presented tonight as 5.35, so that was actually a new provision. 5.35 does not exist in your zoning ordinance, but there is already a provision in it that says it's 5.35, so I wanted to make sure that that provision as it sits right now doesn't exist, so we're just clear on that. It's really just an easy correction. The second thing, and maybe that's already been made since the Planning Commission, I didn't, I wasn't able to determine that. The second thing is I did want to make one other suggestion to the ordinance tonight. I know I hate to make these kinds of suggestions on the spot before you, but in preparing for this, I realized a way that could be beneficial to the township in terms of clearing it. I would like to recommend that if you approve this night, in section, propose section 6.26C, that the last line be revised from, "A primary caregiver with a registry identification card who seeks to grow more than 12 marijuana plants in one building is subject to the requirements of Article III and Article V." I would recommend that you strike "in one building." So just simply read, "Go more than 12 marijuana plants is subject to requirements of Article III and Five." The idea behind that is, is it just tightens it up a little further, indicating that if you're growing large, you know, more than 12 plants, you have to be indoors and you have to be within the industrial district. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Dunn.
I can see where inspection's done by a zoning official. At what point does it turn over to go to Oxford Court?
The zoning official has a right under the zoning powers to undo the inspections. If the zoning official were to observe something that is clearly in violation, knowingly in violation of law, then that individual would be able to sign an affidavit in support of a search warrant, and law enforcement could become involved.
Is that what it's worth?
Correct.
And you have a business in place?
A similar version of this ordinance is in place in Oxford, or excuse me, Commerce Township, and it's being considered by Springfield Township as well.
And what type of influence does it have on police budgets?
It should not have any influence on police budgets, to my knowledge, because this is a zoning enforcement provision. We, you know, it does not contemplate the use of police resources, except to the extent that something's discovered along the way.
So no way to state that's involved on inspection?
This is a strictly local ordinance with local regulation, local control.
Okay.
Any other board questions? Seeing none? Look for a motion. I'll make a motion to take the medical marijuana zoning ordinance to the second reading at the July...
I've got it on the screen here.
I had it.
You got it on the screen, Supervisor Dunn.
Okay. I move to set a second reading and a possible adoption amendments to Article II, Section II, Article III, Section V, the addition of Article V, Section 35, and the addition of Article VI, Section 26 of the Charter Township of Oxford Zoning Ordinance 67A to be considered at the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees, July 14th, 2021, regular meeting.
May I offer with the recommendation stated?
With the recommendation stated.
Thank you, sir.
Second. Moved by Supervisor Curtis, seconded by Trustee Noel. Roll call, please.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
No.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
And Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Hans.
Thank you.
Okay. Chief Pete, item nine, Fire Department Vehicle Purchase.
Evening, board members. Quick update. The Fire Department hosted the second round of the COVID vaccines yesterday. This is all the shot number two that was coming from the ones when they were before. And again, they did around 275 people that came through to get their second shot, so...
275?
Yes. So, it was a pretty good showing for that.
Thank you.
As part of the mileage increase, we added an additional fire inspector, and with that, we had budgeted to purchase an additional vehicle to be able to facilitate that. I went through the My Deal Program from the state of Michigan, which is where the dealers, Ford, GM, Dodge, all bid on it. And then there's a dealer for each one of those that has awarded the bid, and they have the actual bid price, it's all gone through. And researching it, Ford, going through Gornow Ford, Ford has no pickups available whatsoever under the My Deal Program in the state. They have none in the pipeline to be made. Their order process doesn't start until the end of the month, and delivery wouldn't be until the first of the year. Dodge was the same way. The only truck that they could find was a white truck, and it was a very stripped-down version, it had basically nothing on it, small motor, and small everything. Chevy had placed an order for some trucks back in their bank, if you want to call it, and they've got one available that's being made within the next 60 days, and that's a truck from Burger Chevrolet in Grand Rapids, and for the price of $30,011 delivered. And that is my recommendation to allow me to purchase a truck from Burger Chevrolet.
I move to approve the purchase of a 2021 Chevrolet Model 1500 Silverado, W/T double cab, four-wheel-drive work truck, and Burger Chevrolet, the amount of $30,001. This $30,001 amount to be expended to the 2021 fire fund account, 213-357-900.000. Vehicle purchase. Further, Fire Chief Peter Schultz is authorized to sign any purchase documents on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Second. Move by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Trustee Payne. Roll call, please.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
And Trustee Dunn.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you. Item 10, Engineer Sharp, have a report for us, please.
I don't think these are on tonight, are they? Anyway.
Podium's on.
Podium's on?
The podium's on.
Oh, right.
Then it'll be switched back to board once you're done speaking.
Well, it was good to see everybody last month. It's even better to see everybody without the masks on, so just a couple quick updates. If you drive around, if you even leave your house, you'll see a lot of construction activity going on in the community there. Obviously, Westlake, the development, the residential development that's up the street here, all the, the infrastructure is in place. They're going to be doing their testing and so forth, and bringing 68 homes online here probably in the next, probably next couple months by the time they get all their paving and so forth done. You've got the Culvers, which got its top, its first course of asphalt down. They're looking at opening in the, I think it's the first week of July is what Andrew's looking at doing, somewhere in that area there, so line up for your butter burgers there. Township Paul Parking Lot, you've seen the expansion that we've done out there. Had a couple little hiccups, as Mr. Curtis, you know, can look out his window and see every once in a while, but all in all, it's turned out very well so far. Top layer of asphalt will be going down next week, and then the carport structures will be coming in shortly after that. I don't know the exact date of that, but looks very nice out there for sure. Got the Enclaves Development, which is the duplex units up on, up by Abbey Ridge Apartments. The underground infrastructure that'll be starting next week as well, so it'll be 30 more duplex units going in up there. And Joe, it was released in the paper finally that we obtained a grant via Joe and CJ for the Dunlap Road Safety Path. So we're going to be putting in a significant amount of safety path from West Bay Shore up to Dunlap Road, which, or sorry, from West Bay Shore up to Marcus Street, along Dunlap Road, which is going to finally create a gigantic loop that will run all the way up Dunlap, Marcus Street out to 24, into the village, back down Seymour Lake. So I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be pretty exciting when that gets done for people, especially the people of Waterston, to be able to walk down and get to the trails and the boardwalks and things down here, so... With that, any other questions of things ongoing out there in the community right now, engineering-wise, construction-wise?
Yes. Trustee Dunn.
There was interest from a developer to take McLaren building, pretty much tear it down, redo it, and rent back to McLaren, I would suppose. Has there been any plans, anybody showing interest on, I see signs up there, but I don't know. Please don't ask me what's going on.
Yeah, it's hard to keep track of it all, because it seems like we lost a year in there, but I mean, that was probably 18 months ago that we met with those people from McLaren who were looking at doing a new building and so forth. We have not heard much. I mean, there's been a little bit of talk about it, but we haven't had any formal meetings here at the township. There's been no submissions of plans at this time for anything with McLaren.
Contact to see what's shaping?
I have not reached out to them. That's not generally, you know, I don't generally reach out to the people to see what's going on. I usually let them come to me.
Anybody in the township? Do you have a follow-up?
I know a little bit about it. I've been working with them for over 18 months on it. Brad Hanson, Dan Hunter, Mike from Census One, and an environmental group were working on a brown field. There was some negative input put into it, and when they went back to the county, they elected to walk away from the site and go on to other sites in the communities. Clinton Township, Livonia, and I believe one in Canton. I keep trying to call them, they don't call me back anymore. It's been tough.
Let me say there's negative input. I don't remember this board level giving any negative input to the Planning Commission anywhere. So, what's shaping?
Evidently, they discussed this matter with one of the township board members, and they heard some negative inputs towards the TIF, and they elected to go to the other communities that were a little more receptive. What a TIF is, is it, it's...
It's a permanent plan.
Yeah. What they do is, they come to a community, for example, the McLaren building pays no taxes. It's a not-profit, no-tax-paying entity here in the community. Forty years, they've paid no taxes. So Census One said to McLaren, "If we buy the building and tear it down, we will build a building, put it on the tax rolls, and then rent it back to McLaren and/or anybody else." That would have put it on the tax rolls, however, it wouldn't go back on the tax rolls for, I don't know, what was it, three to five years?
It's a pretty short time.
Yeah.
As far as...
So...
I'm kind of disappointed that the township doesn't have a single voice if there's any opposition to this project.
Well, Curtis and I met with them after, and we gave them a positive thought, and I just called them and said, "What's going on here?" And they just said, "Well, they met some resistance, and they've moved on."
It's probably going to affect us in the future. I don't want to rehash and feed on old dog or horse, but this township's got to speak with one voice. Four people got to agree on something. And I don't remember agreeing on any negative input for this project. I just, I thought it was a pretty good project. A piece of land, and we got the no-tax support. Developer coming in, basically tearing it down, building it up, and giving the tax payment for three years. So all of a sudden, we make a quarter million dollars a year on taxes.
And a new facility with all-new parking, new facades, yep.
And I wanted to get a dead horse, but I don't want to hear about this again.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Other than that, I haven't heard anything from, I went to Beaumont Facility, you know, I haven't really heard much about that. Again, I'm not always in to know, as Mr. Curtis, you know, is here at the office every day and the main point of contact. But there are also some additional, you know, projects that we have had some preliminary meetings on. Obviously, there's an applicant here who's looking for rezoning tonight, so there's a lot happening in the community here, so, I mean, that's good to see.
To address the Beaumont concern, our attorney did write an amicus brief in support of it, taking the data from the fire chief, the amount of calls, the distance of runs, time for those runs, traffic that enables or disables him from getting there within 25 minutes. So the judge, it's now in the judge's hand, they will listen to that in civil court.
One more thing, as an opinion, private township supervisor for 22 years, I know a lot of people. A lot of people come and ask me for my opinion on what the hell's going on. And I don't seem to be kept up to date. And I don't like it. I know there's 105 acres of soil, I might have been in Florida, but still, I have the computer. Someone should at least tell me. I keep me up to date. I barely know that we have a deed on a piece of property that was donated by American Agri. I'm tired of it. Again, I have a lot of people coming, asking me, saying, I should know this, but I don't. I can't come, I mean, I can't come to the township every day and try to keep up on it, but I expect the three township full-time officials to at least keep the township board involved. It's kind of embarrassing. I'm tired of it.
You do see some messages, Trustee Dunn, that come out where we have to be careful about having a closed meeting and violation of the Open Meetings Act. I put right on the top of the email, not for reply, do not reply for information only. I copy our attorney on it so that it's attorney-privileged conversation. I try to get that out, but for example, this McLaren thing only happened about two weeks ago, we found out. The amicus brief was filed less than two weeks ago, so some of this information is really new and we will try to get it out.
You get my point, though.
Yep.
You don't have to send it out in an email. Since I do know a few people and they do approach me, I think it'd be nice, a phone call, one-on-one with a couple of people, just to, whatever.
I have a question, if I may ask.
Not really. We'll have another chance.
Fellow comment.
We'll have another chance. Any more trustee comments for Engineer Sharp?
Anything else for Mr. Sharp up here?
No.
Okay, I'm going to gladly take my seat.
All right, on to unfinished business, item 11A, employee handbook amendments. Are you back on the board?
Yeah, switching over.
Okay. We've reviewed the employee handbook in depth. We had a labor attorney make some, several changes to bring us up to speed in the HR world. We're proposing the several amendments and updates to the handbook. We did include a redline copy of what was changed in the email and a copy of the handbook that was completed and approved by the attorney and the three elected officials that are in the office every day. So in front of you, you have the handbook. Were there any questions on the handbook? Yes, sir, Trustee Charles.
First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Curtis, Mr. Supervisor, for answering the questions and understanding what Trustee Dunn is talking about. It's nice to be informed what's going on, so thank you for taking the time. I had a few issues with some of the items in the handbook. For example, one that says the township reserves the right to search employee, employee's work area, employer's deal on township property. I had a concern about the constitutionality of that, but I talked to Mr. Curtis about that and then I reread the constitution, so I'm okay with that, so thank you very much. I have a minor issue with on page four of that handbook, employment of relatives. I'm, I'm okay with it, I'm a little squishy on the definition just because I'm concerned about deputism. But as the supervisor explained to me, hiring processes are done by the order of supervisory responsibility. So I'm okay with it. I'd like it a little bit tighter, but I'm generally okay with the purpose of my comments to say thank you for the communication and information.
Thank you. Any questions on the handbook? Yes, sir, Trustee Dunn.
I'm so happy to see this. This has been going on for how long, Joe?
Couple of years.
And if you'd have been part of the meetings, Treasurer Ferrari and Clerk Wright and I sat in rooms for hours.
I'd like to thank you guys for finally bringing it to us. You know, I've had some of the things in there. I know this jury, when you have, when you have two or three days, you sit on the jury. And one of them is a four-week jury.
Yep.
And I'm glad to see stuff like that has been changed and other, just little things. And I'll tell you, thank you very much for finally bringing this up.
I move to approve the employee handbook dated 6/3/2021 as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Clerk Wright. I'd like a roll call, please.
Trustee Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item 11B.
Follow with that. We should probably have a meeting with our staff afterwards, you know, let them know all the changes.
Like we talked about in an all-employee meeting.
Perfect, okay.
Had the go-karts ready for the parking lot, but the sheriff nixed it. Item 11B, gypsy moths. Why I had that added to the agenda tonight was so that our residents would know and it would be a record that we are receiving, I got 12 calls today and sent out 12 emails regarding citizens that are concerned about the infestation of gypsy moths. Earlier in the spring, committee trustee Charles and Clerk Wright were on a committee. We hired a Michigan State Extension Group and they went around and took an inventory of all the gypsy moth infestations around the area. By the time we got the data, by the time everything was formulated, there was not enough time to set out and capture SAD, Special Assessment Districts, for gathering the money to spray for these moths. There was no flavor by any private individuals that we contacted for spraying for the moths, so the spraying went on, it just didn't happen. There is no money to spray for them. So what we're doing now is anybody that reports an infestation of gypsy moths, we are capturing their email address, their name, their phone number, their address, physical address, and we're offering them the opportunity to take the Special Assessment District forms and get a petition signed for a group, an area, a neighborhood, a quadrant, and set up that Special Assessment District. We can formulate with a group, for example, Bruce Township, to have areas sprayed. It's $150 an acre. We have acres 500-plus, that's a lot of money. So we have to get the people in the area that affects their trees, that it turns their gypsy moths into our problem, so we're working on trying to get that done. So I wanted to give that information out because we do have so many people coming to us with questions on gypsy moths. Yes, Trustee Dunn.
Could I ask Clerk Wright to give a quick overview of what a resident has to do to, to start?
For SAD establishment?
SAD and.
Sure, sure.
It doesn't happen overnight.
No, it doesn't. And we have information for anybody that's interested. Trustee Charles and myself are going to put together a packet for anybody, anybody that's interested. But a basic step to create a SAD district is going to take upwards of six months to actually get it from start to getting it in, in place. We have to have four meetings, we have to have two public hearings, we have to advertise in the paper of the area, we have to allow people to step up and protest the, the SAD in that area. So it's very, very intensive involvement. We have to verify your signatures. Once we get the signatures, make sure they're correct. If there's, for example, husband and wife in the household that's on the same title to the house, they both have to sign the petition. So there'll be definitely a scrutinized process to get, get it in place. So the gypsy moths usually hatch in May, so what you want to do is if, if people are interested in going forward with an SAD, they'll want to get this going probably by September or October at the earliest, because we have to, we have to get the petitions, we have to get those verified. We have to authorize the engineer to set the boundaries of the SAD area, decide what the estimated cost is going to be, and then, then proceed with the SAD process. From, from there, we, we get the rule established and the supervisor takes a look at that to confirm it. He presents that to the board. There's a public hearing for people to see what the price is going to be on, on the process of the SAD. Once that's completed, it goes to the county to confirm the SAD, then it comes back to us to actually finalize the SAD and then it gets put on the, on the, it'll get put on your tax wall. It's not a tax, it gets put on your tax bill though, the way, the way the process that we do it here in Oxford Township is. So it's a very in-depth process, so if anybody has any questions, I'm, I'm happy to actually assist you in the process. What we're going to do is, this is just my thinking, is we're going to give you the basic steps, we're going to give you a sample petition, we're going to give you information such as a brochure like this from the Michigan State Cooperative Extension to give you an idea what gypsy moths can do to your, to your trees. So those that are affected already know what's happening with that, but, but we're trying to give you as thorough a package as we can to try to answer your questions and try, try to make this process work for everybody involved. So in a, in a brief overview, that's pretty much an SAD for, for setting it up.
One last comment. We had to sign in March for aerial spraying just to get the authorization from the FAA, should or could we have afforded or the community wanted to pay to have an area sprayed. That process has to begin in March and we had to sign the okay form to fly, yet we didn't have the money to spray, so it just went away, but at least we were prepared. Trustee Charles.
Just a quick comment on the two for, to add what Mr. Wright said. The cost is variable. I think Rochester Hill State, over $250 an acre. We got it down to about $150 an acre, but there's no guarantee we'll be able to send them up next year, should they ever come up in the conversation. And we do have some really talented resources, people can add to the process. What we will need, as Mr. Wright said, is people in the community who want to take the ball and run with it, with the SAD.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, gypsy moths? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 12, new business, 12A, rezoning of parcels 04-36-100-01 Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to make any comments?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you want me to state name, address?
Name, address is great.
Okay, just making sure. Eric Kinesny, Clearview Homes, 811 East South Boulevard, Rochester Hills. This is Jerry Griffith from Clearview Homes as well. We're just, we're, we're here in front of the board to seek the rezoning. I'm assuming you guys got the information on it and looked at the surrounding areas. You know, our goal is to reduce the impact of a development on this property. It's currently zoned two and a half acre minimums. At a two and a half acre minimum, in order to put the development in and the density, you basically have to develop the entire piece. So our goal is to minimize the impact on the area, minimize the impact on the surrounding areas and the nature, reduce the minimum sizes to an acre, and then through the application process of the development, go forward with a cluster option, which allows taking the area of the homes or the lot sizes and condensing them into a smaller area, but not increasing the actual number of homes. So by doing that, it allows us to have less impact on the actual overall space and actually develop less of the area. So that's our goal. If you look at the other zonings around the proposed piece, it, it's a logical progression from the area surrounding it. The property to the east is currently zoned SF1. We're seeking R3 and then the property to the west of us is actually currently zoned R1. So it's a, it's a logical progression in stepping from the different sizes of the zonings.
The map is wrong.
Pardon?
That zoning map is a little wrong.
The proposed zoning map.
The proposed zoning map. Oh, okay, I, that's the two parcels, that's right.
Yep.
The property below you is zoned R2.
Yep.
To your south. Okay. Do the public first? Any public questions for the board to answer for you? Yes, sir. Come on up, state your name and address.
So, Paul Maverick. I'm in the, one of the representatives for the property to the south, 689 Indian Lake Road. And so I kind of represent, or show some excerpts from Oxford's master plan. One of them has to do with public input, you know, with these, what he's saying, his story changed from the last board meeting. They were talking about an increase of 30 homes at that time, you know, once we changed the zoning. I don't know who's going to enforce that, he sticks to this cluster development or whatever he said, but it was increasing the amount of homes by 30 at the last meeting where we had on this. So I just wanted to talk to the master plan. We got public input. In terms of residential land use, nearly half of all respondents indicated a preference for larger lots and lower-density developments. As well, most respondents indicated that the community's rural character is the one that's most favorable of Oxford Township. And so as I stated before, I am one of the seven property owners to the south, which, yeah, is, the zoning on that shows R3, but they are all 10-acre, 10-plus acre properties. So they're actually built like SF3 residences, so then to go to an R1 on that bordering property isn't consistent with the area. So based off the increased amounts of residences in that area, we already have the R1 property to the west that he referred to, that is under development as R1, that's Tullamore, so it's about 30-plus acre parcel where the woods were decimated and now we're, you know, they're just now putting in homes. So talking to the traffic and crash counts in that area, if we look at the Lapier and Drainer area, it is the top three of the four for traffic counts. South of Drainer, it's 20,481. Well, anyway, they're the top three. So north of Drainer, 19,196, and northbound on Drainer, 18,532. And then as well, a little bit further down the list, we have west, Drainer eastbound, west of Lapier, 5,923. So we already have a lot of traffic coming through that area, then they haven't even finished develop, I mean, I don't even know they have houses yet and Tullamore is still under development and that's a higher-density sub that they're putting into that area. And then as we look at the high-crash intersections for Lapier and Drainer, it's the top of the list at 30.4 annual crash average, ranking in the county at number 52, but locally it's number one. Then we talked to putting all of these properties on the city sewer, going into our water system, which was put in the mid-'90s. They had, we had four wells at that time. They had, you know, one of them was due to contamination, brought it down to three, so then they were all interconnected. And so increasing that load, I know the mid-'90s was quite a while ago. I love the mid-'90s, but it's been a long time, so there's been a lot of development since then and then we're talking about, and then the sewer system's 25-plus years old. And if you look at that area currently, it is not in the boundary of the water and sewage district, so we're going to add that large area on there and that will definitely add a cer, a good amount of load, and so that's definitely a concern that I have. Looking at the objectives in the master plan, objective number five, the address existing concerns related to the compatibility of adjacent land uses and prevent conflict, conflicts between future land uses from occurring. That's one of our strategies is to consolidate intense land uses in specific areas of the township, allowing for adequate land use transition to more sensitive areas of the township, so that's inconsistent with the strategy there. The urban, or establish, objective six, establish urban service boundaries, which will discourage the extension of public sewer and water service into areas of the township ideally situated for open space, natural features, rural equestrian uses, large lot residential, and consider traffic impacts of new development and the cumulative impacts on roads. So strategy one we have for that, we being Oxford, carefully evaluate the township's remaining large tracts of property and extract, extractive lands to determine the limits of dense residential and commercial growth, so that, that definitely was in the scope, and then discourage the extension of public sewer and water out. discourage the extension of public sewer and water outside of the established urban service boundary, except where such extension would be necessary from an environmental standpoint, so it's violation of that. And going into the community character, objective one, to preserve from, the scenic rural character of township's outlying areas. It violates strategy four, which is retain large lot residential patterns in the northwest, or well, that's northwest, sorry, northwest, northeast. Preserve existing tree rows and woodlands wherever possible through the amendment of the zoning ordinance, including tree protection and replacement standards. So, looking at that area now, it's according to the master plan, it's potential conservation natural areas and wetlands. And so, in conclusion, I'm a concerned citizen. I feel that the rezoning of this area is inconsistent with master plan as far as the public desires, Oxford's character desires or strategy, traffic safety, and then the public water and sewer concerns. So, I have any of this material, if anyone wants to review it on their own.
Paul, what was your last name?
Vavrick. V is in Victor, A, V is in Victor, R I C K.
Chuck, this isn't on water and sewer, correct?
It is not on water and sewer.
It's individual wells and septics, correct?
While there is water and sewer at its border, the proposal is for septic and well water.
Well, that changed since the last time as well.
There is no sewer capacity nor water capacity in that area for that land to be zoned any less than R3. R3 gives you an acre or gives you the capability of having a well and septic. The property to the east is R1. It is on well and septic. Those lots are 12,000 square feet. The R3 designation gives you a lot of 44, 45,000 square feet, roughly, one acre. The properties to the south are zoned R2. I don't know, I heard SF1.
I have the zoning ordinance right here, but.
I have, I have the zoning map and I have the certificate of occupancy for 680, 657 Indian Lake Road and 689 Indian Lake Road, and the zoning at the time of build was R2, which is a lot smaller than R3. And the zoning map, the current zoning map in our office shows the property south of this is zoned R2. So, I don't know where the misnomers come in, but those are being addressed.
But then, they are 10 acre parcels, which is more of an SF3 build, but the zoning, it's inconsistent with the zoning, but it's how the, how it is.
It's how it's developed is in R2, you could put a house on 25,000 square foot lots, I think it is, R2. R3 is one acre. So, if you build a house in R2 on 10 acres, it can still be zoned R2. So, I hope that answered all your questions.
Well, that's another change since the last time was, that was proposed, they were saying that there was less impact by going in the sewer and city water, so that is another change from the last meeting in the number of houses and also the water and sewer situation.
Okay. All right. Any questions, any other questions in the audience? Public comment, questions for the developer? You're not in the public, sir. Come on up. Whoever, somebody had their hand up?
Coming up.
No, come to the public first, and I'll select.
Public.
They're first, that comes back to us.
Okay. Hi, my name's Nancy Sarkony. I live at 657 Indian Lake Road, and I just want to, for the record, state that when we built our home there, it was zoned one house per 10 acres. That's how it was zoned when we purchased that land.
Which address is that?
657 Indian Lake.
Yep. Jack Sarkony.
Yep.
At the time was 865 North Conklin.
Yes.
It was zoned R2 at the time of your build.
Oh, well, I will have to recheck my paperwork.
Okay.
Then on that, but I know when we purchased it, it was one house per 10 acres.
Okay.
Okay. So, according to the master plan, the goal of the master plan that's stated all over it is to preserve and conserve. It's everywhere. I don't need to delineate it, you can take a look at it, I'm sure you guys are well familiar with it. And that's part of what makes Oxford so unique, is a lot of this beautiful land and the topography. One of the things that, when I was trying to do a little research on this, is I noticed an article that was written in December where, Mr. Curtis, you were quoted as saying, "We're not looking to mass develop." Well, I don't understand what the big push from a developer is to develop and change the zoning to one acre parcels. To me, that's mass development. I want to see, you know, it doesn't need to be that. I don't understand how the proposed rezoning fits in with that goal, the original goal of conserving and preserving. I don't, I don't understand that. The topography of that land, according to the master plan, I have a map here, I don't know if you want to enlarge it, I don't know if you have the capability of doing that. Does anybody up there have the capability of enlarging it? But it shows that the dark brown areas are unsuitable for development due to the presence of wetlands and other water features, and it's a big portion of what the developer's talking about that is dark brown. The light brown areas represent land with limited capability for development because of the constraints generally posed by the use of septic systems. And most of it is light brown and dark brown. There's only a little bit of white, and that's the only part that have no limitations, but there's not much of it. Do you want this map? I don't know who's controlling it, but.
No, we have that map right up there.
Okay, that's not what I'm looking at. That's not, this is what's in the master plan here, okay? So, this is what I'm going by. So, I guess, you know, those are my major things. The promise, the goal, the original goal was to conserve and preserve. We were attracted to this area, I've been living in this area for many, many years too, I moved here in the mid-'80s. And to have a developer come in and propose one acre parcels on land that was originally designated to be for recreation and conservation with 15 feet side setbacks, we've all seen those subdivisions, all you got to do is go to Hamtramck, you know what I'm talking about? You know, the big homes or even in Rochester, I'm not sure what Waterstone looks like, but the homes are one on top of another. We don't need that. We have Tullamore, okay? What's going to happen when Tullamore is developed? Now, we have this proposed subdivision, then the one next to it, Shepherd's Lane, then around the corner on Bar Road, there's two subdivisions that have been there for many years, and there's still vacant lots available. I don't know if anybody's making any money on it, you know what I mean? But five subdivisions in a row, and then what's going to happen to the golf course? That's a question that I have. So, I'm asking you, I'm imploring you to not change the zoning on it. We didn't move here for that. We don't want that kind of an environment. It will cause traffic backups. In the master plan, it calls about not widening the roads to accommodate, you know, especially for the natural beauty roads. So, my, my reason for being here is to implore you to not change the zoning on that, on crossroads. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any public comment? Come on up, sir. Name and address.
Michael, Michael Peter, 319 Indian Lake. I basically border the golf course. I agree with everything my two other neighbors have stated, so I won't go into that, but just to give you a little background, I moved down here, purchased this property, me and my wife, maybe two years ago, and the entire reason that I purchased this property and I overpaid for this property, in my opinion, is because of the, is because of the nature of the housing and the surroundings. You know, the large parcels, I, you know, I'm not going to argue zone this zoning or that zoning. Bottom line is, they're all 10 acre parcels, however they're built, I'm not planning on building eight more houses on my lot. I bought this house because of all that, the natural beauty, the not having to see my neighbors, you know? And that was the whole reason, so now to go and look at this property behind us being turned into a massive sub with one acre parcels is really, you know, discouraging to me for the reason I moved down here. You know, I brought my wife down basically from Traverse City area, and I promised her something similar, and to now have a big massive sub going to the back of my property is, is not desirable. And secondly, Indian Lake's probably got to be the worst in Oakland County as far as road damage. I call the road commission constantly, and I think it's in large part to all the subdivisions that have been built over the years. Now, I wasn't here, but I can tell you, there's at least three, four, five subdivisions right on Indian Lake, and there's really, to me, it seems like no concern or, or hey, it's, the township can get a whole bunch of tax revenue, and that's great, but then it's called Oakland County to complain about the dangerous road conditions. You know, I'm only a half mile from 24, and it's dangerous. I mean, people driving on the opposite sides of the road, potholes can swallow your car, I'm getting alignment on my car every, every other month. So, Drainer's not much better, and is there a plan, what are you going to do with all the extra traffic up, up there if, if this goes through? And, and once they get the zoning, they might say X, now get the zoning, and then all of a sudden it becomes Y, because now they have the zone and they can do what they want. I'm not against real estate development, I've done some in the past, I'm involved with some now, but it's consistent with the surrounding area, and it's not, it's not this. So, I, as, as my neighbor as well said, you know, I'm, I'm asking you to not approve the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else in the audience? Commissioners comments? Trustee Dunn?
Question for the developer.
Guys want to come on?
Are you using, do you own property to access Indian Lake Road?
Access Indian Lake Road? No.
Do you plan on sending traffic to Indian Lake Road? So, are you going to?
No, no, we have no access to Indian Lake Road.
For, for this particular property, no.
Another question, do you plan on paving roads going out to the ballpark? I'm just asking a simple question, the people may ask me.
Yeah, don't have a plan right now to do that, no.
I'll go around the room. Trustee Noel.
As part of planning commission we spoke last month, one of the topics that came up was the model homes, if I could go back in there. You've had a chance to look at it last month and now into this month. Do you have an idea what you're looking at for the model?
Yeah, I mean, from a. I want to, I want to caution the group. You cannot rezone a property for a development. You can, you can only state the quantity of homes that can go in there. You cannot state that we are going to put these type of homes, this project is going in there. You can't zone a property for a development. You can rezone a property in the community. The number of homes that are eligible, you can only guess, there are 100 and how many acres?
Just 30.
103?
130.
130. If you could develop a net 130 acres, how much wetlands is in there?
A substantial amount.
Okay. Subtracting those out, we can't rezone it to a number. You can only imply the number based on the number of acres in the property.
Mr. Supervisor, what I was trying to point out was is that you could expect so many homes out of a SF1 development.
Yes.
And you could expect so many homes out of a R3 development.
Yes.
And you can look at the, the property as it sits with the wetlands and things, and there is an expectation. I was just looking.
Thank you.
Could I ask the question of the applicant, through your homes, of what their expectation is if it was re-sold? Is that a fair question?
Sure.
Thank you.
The net homes.
Yeah. Our, our high level analysis, and we haven't done the wetland study yet, we have to obviously get out there, there's obvious areas that are, that we can see without actually doing a wetland survey, but our high level analysis is that from, you, you go from approximately 50 currently that could be put in right now. So, without rezoning anything right now, current zoning, two and a half acres, you could put in about 50. Changing to the, to the one acre, we would expect to be about 75. So, it's a net difference of around 25.
That's an expectation, correct, Mr. Supervisor?
Thank you.
If I can elaborate, I think, and you were at the meeting, I was not, but I think the township consultant planner made that comment in the meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
And he said 65 to 75, our, our target is to be right around 70.
Yeah. All right, Zach had made those, those references as well.
Trustee Payne. No questions. Treasurer Ferrari?
No, sir.
No questions. Clerk Wright?
Yeah, looking at the, at the aerial here that I have on the screen, appears that the, the southern portion property appears to be quite a bit of wetlands there. Is there, is there any idea of any development that might potentially be proposed down in the, say, in the southwest corner, or proposed across the wetlands?
Scroll your map up a little.
All right. I'll blow it up.
Well, you're on the top portion. Get down into the next one. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, so.
No, our, our goal is to avoid the wetlands. There, there's no plans to go into it, and that, and again, that's, that's one of the things that I think isn't potentially coming across to the public, is that it truly is less impactful if you're truly trying to preserve overall nature. It's less impactful when you actually look at what ends up going into a development like this. When you, if you, again, right, as is, if we just go in and submit, under current zoning, approximately 50 homes can go in, and by having two and a half acre lots, yes, they're larger lots, but they take up more of the overall space. I think that's the part that's potentially getting lost here. They're, they're much larger lots, so you have more streets to get from lot to lot, and you, you destroy more of what's there in order to get in the same, or in this case, a smaller lot and potentially a few more homes, but you're impacting far less of the overall. And again, our, our plan and our goal would do, be to use the cluster option that exists as an ordinance in the, in the township to be able to minimize that even more. That's our goal, is to minimize the impact on this property.
At a high level to elaborate, we want to keep the, the housing as close to Drainer as possible and leave as much of the south in its current status.
Chuck, can I have a do-over?
Sure.
Cluster, does he mean the PUD?
It, it sounds like one, but it's not.
Okay.
No, it's not, it's not.
It's not a PUD?
It's not a PUD.
Okay.
This is a rezoning right now. If he comes in with a plan, he can come in with a PUD.
And that would allow the cluster?
Certainly, would allow a lot of things.
Okay. And Jack, do they're going to split off the piece, right? That still remains with the schools? You guys looking at splitting that piece off?
Yes.
Okay.
No, north of Drainer.
Yeah, north would stay with the.
North of Drainer would stay.
Okay, and you'd split that off as part of the purchase?
Correct.
Correct, yeah, they would.
Okay. I just want to make sure those two wouldn't get confused.
See the black line on the screen? That's Drainer Road. The property to the north would remain with the school.
Okay.
Any other questions? Clerk Wright?
No, I'm also, thank you.
Okay, trustee Charles.
You mentioned wetlands, have you had wetlands specifically, other projects that you've done?
I, almost everything that we do now has wetlands involved in some way. Our goal personally is always to try to just avoid them. When I say that, I mean, work around them.
Have you been testing the sales, see if you can build these clusters where you want to build them?
Nothing, this is our absolute first step out of the gate. If this goes well, then our next, we have a ton of due diligence, basically, right to pull the trigger on and figure out all of those kinds of things.
And then, so you, have you had any complaints from, I don't know, Eagle Business now or DEQ in the past with wetlands?
No.
And then one of the concerns that residents brought up would be, somebody said trees, they've got a toll bar and how that was moonscape where you left college. What are your thoughts about retaining trees and things like that so it doesn't look like a moonscape?
Yeah, the, the goal, like I said, would be to keep the development as close to the north as possible and where it's right now more cleared than as you go further south and where the wetlands generally are, I mean, you can see the dark areas on there, those are definitely wet. To, to try to keep as much as possible and do our building in the part that's already cleared, it's, it's more, it helps us, it's less expensive. Removing trees is not a good thing for development, right? You don't want to do it. So that would be our goal.
And one other thing too, someone said 15 feet setback, right? From structure to structure, is that what I heard?
Someone made that comment.
Yeah.
So that, that fits the cluster definition then?
I, I couldn't honestly answer that question without having.
I don't have a zoning ordinance map in front of me to say what R3 calls for side setbacks. Any other questions?
Can I make a comment?
Come on back up to the mic, state your name and address and make a comment.
Paul Vavrick, Indiana 689 Indian Lake Road, back again. So we are talking about two parcels and if they're planning on developing the closer to drainer road, why aren't they just going after the zoning, rezoning of that property for R3 instead of the SF1?
You guys want to answer that?
Maintain consistency?
Yeah, we're, the, the two parcels are being put together as one parcel. Like you said, it's going to be split off at the road, but the two parcels will be the development. We're not, we're not suggesting that, you know, the line or the split.
Why don't you come on back up to the mic?
There's a red line in between and then you're, you're referring to the portion north of drainer that Camp Oakland's going to retain. But I'm talking about the red line from close to drainer to away from drainer because it's split right now.
Correct.
So that's why I'm saying, why are you, you know, if you're going to build that side, why don't you just maintain the SF1 on the southern border?
Come on up.
What we said was our goal is to stay as far north as possible. We didn't make the comment that we were going to only develop north of the property split line, if you will.
Right.
So, but that is our goal is to stay as close to the north and it's just logical and what makes sense when you look at the natural topography already and the wetlands areas. It doesn't, doesn't make sense and does us no good to try and avoid the good areas, the high areas and the spots that make sense for development and push ourselves into wetlands area.
But is the reason that the school is selling both parcels as one?
Oh, absolutely.
That's why. I wanted to give Paul an answer.
Yeah, oh, yeah, if that's, if that's where the question is coming from, absolutely. I mean, they, for, for them to sell only the northern section that we're talking about, the other parcel would become landlocked. So, yeah, it's, they're, they're being sold as one parcel.
But I have a comment too. I'll come up.
Okay, I'll give you one, Nancy.
Thank you. Nancy Sarcone, 657 Indian Lake Road. Okay, so that brings up a little burning question is that parcel to the north of that red line has two different zones. Oh, it doesn't? They changed it since the last meeting?
The property north of that red line?
Yes.
That property shows both of those are SF1.
Okay, so see that dark squiggle line?
Yep, that's drainer road.
Okay, so what about north of that?
That's going to retain with the school.
Okay, so that's got a different zoning than SF1?
No, that is SF1, it's in the blue.
The other one's going to change.
Last meeting, they were zoned differently because it was a bone of contention that was brought up. So we got to look at the minutes on that.
Okay, here, here's what's happening. They are buying the entire property. They are probably going to sell back to the, or not buy the northern part of it and keep it with the school.
Oh, so the nonprofit's going to be selling it?
I want to answer your question for you, but.
That, what you, the second part is what you said is correct. So the, the bone of contention, as you said, was that they didn't want that to happen where there would be a split zoning. In what we're proposing, there will not be a split zoning because the piece north of drainer will remain with the school and will remain the current zoning on that.
Okay, but you're buying both parcels now?
Both parcels below the road.
Below drainer road.
Not above them.
Okay, I'll have to look into that. I, without having anything really to tell me, I, I can't understand that. And then somebody had brought up the 15 foot setbacks. Well, that's in the plan. That is in the proposed zoning map amendment, the rezoning amendment. That's right here for 15 feet side setbacks, 35 feet front setbacks and 30 feet rear setbacks. So that's where that came from, somebody had asked.
Slide down.
Okay, and then I also wanted to ask a question because I thought you heard that it couldn't be rezoned before they purchased it. Did you not say that?
I didn't.
Oh, okay, thought I heard that.
I don't any, know of anybody that would purchase land before it was rezoned. If you're seeking a rezon.
I mean, you know, if, if they want the parcel, you know what I mean? So again, I ask that this not happen because for just, somebody just to say, no, we're not going to do it. We've been, we've all been in that position before, right? And then they go ahead and do it. So please do not let that happen. One acre parcels should never be allowed in this beautiful jewel of a community. Please hear me, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other questions from any commissioners? Roll that down to the motion, please.
motions.
Move down a little more.
Yeah, reduce it.
Look for a motion. I move to approve the zoning map amendment from SF1 Suburban Farms to R3 Single Family Residential on parcel 0436-100-001 and parcel 04-36-100-002 based on the following. The proposed zoning map amendment is for the portion of the property south of East Drainer Road. The portion of parcel 0436100-001 north of East Drainer Road will remain in the SF1 Suburban Farms zoning district. Number two, the proposed zoning district is generally consistent with the future land use map. Number three, the proposed zoning district is generally consistent with the surrounding area and uses. Number four, the potential uses within the proposed zoning district are not likely to create substantial negative impacts on utilities, infrastructure, or public services. Motion by Supervisor Curtis, seconded by trustee Noel. Roll call, please.
Trustee Charles. Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Dunn. Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Okay, moving on. 12B, service and maintenance fees for Hart election equipment.
And let me get down to that point there. Our voting equipment.
Thank you, Nancy. Paul?
Our voting equipment is up for renewal for a service and maintenance contract next year in 2022. So we are programmed with the Oakland County through Hart Inter-Civic that provides all the voting and election equipment and they've proposed a five-year maintenance program for us and the cost is two options. We can pay on a yearly basis or we can pay upfront for a 10% discount. If we go with a discounted price, we would save $3,260. So I think the bottom line question is if we can earn 10% on our money over the next five years or better, then we should do the, spread the cost out. If not, I would recommend going with option two and just paying the amount upfront and have the election equipment serviced through Hart for the next five years.
Can I call on myself? Me first? Okay, how much should we pay for this stuff?
The voting equipment?
Yeah.
In round numbers, each unit is roughly $5,000.
How many units?
There are 16 units. There are 10 verity scan units. Those are the units that usually a voter, when they go to the polls and put their ballot in the tabulator, as we call it, that's the verity scan. The touch writers are for ADA accessible people that need assistance or request assistance where you're, you're wheelchair or dependent or hearing impaired and that's where the touch writer would be used in that instance. We have, we have seven precincts, we have absent counting boards, we have one verity scan for each precinct, so that's seven. We have two units for the absent counting board and we have one as a spare in case one goes out. The touch writers, there, there are six of them. We have a dual precinct at Lake Point Church, so that touch writer is used for both, both precincts there. Based upon how the absentee ballots have been going lately in the 2020 election, they went up, Kelly, what do you think, three times?
Oh, yes.
For that, there might be a request of the board in the future for another machine, but not just yet. So we'll, we'll see how that works out.
Trustee Dunn.
I'm going to ask clerk Wright for his recommendation, but I just want to say a couple things before that. I worked with him for 12 years. We bought a coffee machine. He had a spreadsheet. How much paper we use by the month or the year?
By the day.
Week? Day?
By the day.
Hours. So I trust clerk Wright in his spreadsheet, he is Mr. Spreadsheet, that this thing has been, went over with a fine tune development, I'm going to ask him for his recommendation.
Well, my recommendation based upon our return on monies is to go with option two and pay it upfront unless Treasurer Ferrari can get us over 10% on our money.
Not legally.
Over five years.
I move to approve option two of the renewal agreement with Hart Inter-Civic for the service and maintenance to the verity scan units and touch writer units. For a five-year period, I authorize clerk Curtis W. Wright to sign the agreement on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford. The cost for the service and maintenance to be expensed to elections account, 101-190-933.000, equipment maintenance.
Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by trustee Dunn. Any questions? Trustee Charles.
What is maintenance? What's done with these machines?
If, if a machine were, were to break, break down or, you know, maintain, where, they, they would, you know, I don't really have an answer for you, but I would think that when they maintain it, you know, if there's a screen that discolors or something on it, they would, they would come out and, and probably swap that out for us.
So it hasn't happened yet?
Not to my knowledge, there hasn't been anything.
Right now we have seven precincts. Are we expecting more precincts with the redistricting that's going on?
To be determined.
Well, I know, you know.
To be determined. I mean, if, if it redistricts, they might, they might shrink the maximum voters, voters in a precinct, which would cause us to expand the amount of voting precincts. And if they redistrict too, there might be some, I don't know if the school districts are involved with redistricting. We, our whole south border of the township is Lake Orion Schools. So indirectly I could set up a precinct just for Lake Orion Schools right now, but I don't want to do that until such time as this redistricting gets finalized out, but.
Is it a possibility these might be outdated in five years?
Probably, pretty slim, I'm guessing, because this was a very intense program when it was rolled out. We had three companies come in and demonstrate to the whole clerking community in Oakland County and the state of Michigan and Hart was the decision of the county election official. And so, so they took probably, I'd say a good two months to make their final decision before the actual choice was made. And Hart, for example, they secured, I think, only 10 counties in the state, but those 10 counties were like 3 million people, whereas there was ESNS and there was Dominion and you, and you probably heard about Dominion's fiasco that they had with voting fraud and whatever else. So it looks like we've made a good choice on behalf of Joe Rosell of Oakland County of, of the Hart equipment as of right now.
I'm glad you said that was on the questions because I hear that quite frequently about the problems with Dominion, so.
Mm-hmm.
Get you to answer that.
Are there any other questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Dunn. Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and trustee Charles.
Okay, 12C, CDBG Minor Home Repair.
Board members, that's a misnomer, it's my fault, it's CDBG for emergency services. Something like a minor home repair, probably should be for emergency services. Basically, it's to, for Fish, they're looking at performing food services again for our residents. We allocate money for a 2020 block grant for them of $4,588. This just approves the contract. I make a motion that the Oxford Township Board trustees agrees to waive its resolution to solicit bids and award its emergency services bid for 2020 Community Development Block Grant Fund, CDBG, the amount of $4,588 to Oxford and Fish. I authorize the CDBG coordinator, Joseph G. Ferrari, signing the applicable documents and propose a ratification.
Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by trustee Noel. This roll call giving away money.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dunn. Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Who seconded that motion by chance? That would be John Noel.
Trustee Noel.
Trustee Noel, thank you.
Okay, items removed from consent agenda, nothing. Number 14, public comment. Again, we have two public comment portions. We had one up front. Second one, sir, step up, your address, please. Name and address.
Charles Devlin, 1129 Cabell Lane. My comment was it's, over the winter I realized they weren't clearing the safety path over by Clear Lake School and I just assumed it was because the schools were pretty much up in the air with this COVID business. I guess somebody has decided that they don't want to maintain the safety path there. The grass is, you know, it looks like heck. Apparently now we've got somebody who is cutting it. For a while, the trash over at Lake Point School wasn't being emptied. That was like a month or two of the, you know, people were putting in the little doggy bags that were overflowing on the ground. Someone, I'm hoping it's the township, has now come and started emptying that again. When I heard Jim Sharp's comment about the safety paths being run up Dunlop Road here and everything, I think that's wonderful. People get out, they meet one another, they get some new views, they're not isolated. But with this grass growing, you know, you're just inviting ticks, rodents, that sort of thing, and it looks like heck. I notice out in front of the township hall here, it looks pretty darn good. I hope that this new plan, if it is a new plan by the board or by anybody here in the township, it's consistent across the whole township. I don't want winners and losers. I just, everybody should be in the same boat. I helped Mr. Wright trim back some of the trees a couple of years ago on the safety path south of Drainer Road and it was wonderful. I, I help out a lot of times in my own neighborhood cleaning up some of the stuff. But a lot of the stuff I think could be done either put out for bid or in-house with some of the township workers and this lawn thing is probably one of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other public comment? Brian?
I'm going to put a different hat on for a moment and not be the library director. I'm also the president of Northeast Oakland Historical Society Museum and I'm here this evening to let you know, if you weren't aware already, the museum is back open. We are open on Thursdays and Saturdays from 1 to 4 and if you haven't been in the museum in a while, you, you need to come and visit. And I say that because we took advantage of the. And I say that because we took advantage of the closure during COVID and completely renovated the interior of that facility. And if you are familiar with the building, the bank building at 1 North Washington at all, you've also driven by recently noticed that the awnings have come down on the south side of the building. The block window has come out. And we have restored the building back to its original look and design and feel by putting in a UV-protected, high-level window that will let a lot of natural light flood into that building and just give it a whole new breath of fresh air. So we've also totally overhauled and curated the exhibits within the building. And we hope to see you come in and join us soon.
Thank you, Brian.
I'm going to put on a different hat for just a moment. I'm also, during COVID, was appointed to be a trustee on the Four County Community Foundation. And it was a very pleasant surprise to recently see a grant submitted by the township, submitted by CJ Carnacchio for the community garden. I sit on the Grant Review Committee for the Four County Community Foundation. I, in full disclosure, let them know that I have a relationship with the township. But it was very pleasant to see that grant and to see Oxford playing a role in reaching out to the Four County Community Foundation as well. So congratulations on your recent grant. And I look forward to maybe seeing future grants in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other public comment? We'll start with the Board of Trustees' comments. We'll start over there since Trustee Dunn has his hand up. I like that.
I'd like to congratulate our grant writer, CJ Carnacchio, for not only the Four County branch, but also the $50,000 grant. He's just recently got, he'll allow us to check the safety path up here. Not only that, if we're able to do it up at school, he's done a great job in his last, I think he's been here a year and a half. He's brought in hundreds of thousands of dollars. And he's doing hell of a work that I'd like to congratulate.
And to reiterate what you're saying, he's up close to over half a million dollars in grants and gifts for the township.
We don't pay him that much.
He's on retainer now for the next four years. Trustee Knoll, do you have anything to say? Trustee Payne?
Yes, last year, we were kind of behind the eight ball with the budget. I mean, I know it had a lot to do with COVID. But I'd like to just mention that it is June already and we need to, I hope we move in a little more timely fashion this year so we're not, like, catch up.
Come on, look on my desk.
Oh, thank you. Been there, done that.
Treasurer Ferrari?
I've been thinking about the whole recreational marijuana thing. We currently have a moratorium on that established by the township board. Mr. Charles wasn't involved in that. I think there's one here that voted against that. But I think anybody that's interested should approach the township board, whether it would like to consider addressing that moratorium. Because I'm starting to get calls, "Does anyone like to talk to me?" I don't think that's the right approach. It's a board-placed moratorium. If somebody wants us to reconsider that, they have to come here. And that's even if the board wants to consider it. If there's four of us, I'd say, we're happy with where we're at, end of story. But I don't like the idea of people, you know, because I know I've gotten an email that somebody may want to meet with me to talk about that. I don't think that's the right approach. This board placed a moratorium, this board lifts it, not us individually. Also due for communications and what Supervisor, Trustee Dunn had said. For me, you can always feel free to call me, email me, text me, Facebook message me. And Bill, as you know, when you're in the office, you kind of know more because you're there. I don't know if it's a failure on our part to disseminate more information, but you kind of know things just around. So I don't know if there's something we can do better to increase that communication, but I'm open for suggestions. Okay. That's all I have.
Trustee Charles.
Couple things. I'm also on the DDA board, as some people know. The DDA just got 800 bucks from the vice president. PD is also busy, been the busiest and best it's been for years. A lot of credit to our new DDA director. We've got a lot of things going. You've been through towns to baskets, flower baskets, a lot of things. Now it's looking at best it's looked in many, many, many years. I'm also on the Oxford Madison Youth Assistance Group. And that group, we also received $1,000 from the vice president, too. Just an update there. And the Oxford Madison Youth Group, there's also plenty of them this summer. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Clerk Wright, a couple of things for clarification. I know in our packet is included some updates from our committees and all that. So if there's information of the committees that I'm on that you need, other board members, feel free to get with me as well on those. So I try to just hit the highlights of the committees that I'm on to give you an idea of what's going on with them. And also, I'd just like to wish our trustee Dunn a happy birthday.
Ah, you took my first one.
I beat you.
Yeah. Happy birthday, Bill.
Gotcha. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple. Number one, Tough Mudder is coming. The first event is June 19th and June 20th. The trucks are starting to unload right now. And there will be an event, all pre-sales, about 5,000 participants, staggered times, all on-site parking this year. There is no off-site parking. We have fire contracts in place, right, Pete? We have sheriff contracts. We have reserves officers waiting to help. And Tough Mudder may be back in August to do a second event also. We also have the Road Commission of Oakland County with an escrow fund to chloride so that we have dust control. And we are working with Peter Fredericks to make sure that everything goes off well.
Did you buy Bill a ticket for that, for his birthday?
No, I did not.
Okay.
I don't make the big money, Joe. Carnival, Seymour celebration. No fireworks this year, but the carnival is at Seymour Lake Park, June 10th through June 13th and June 17th through June 20th. The third thing I want to talk about, and it was brought up tonight about having marijuana districts. I think we would entertain that onto our next agenda. But I would encourage you all to understand what's going on with the marijuana laws. I know I have one of my personal friends in business, compadres, in the audience. He's also a member of the Hadley Township. What is it, Board of Trustees? Planning Commission also. He's listening to our medical marijuana ordinance that we just did. Robert Hartwick, if you would, just say hello. And he came to listen because he is faced with the same concerns that this community should be faced with. Currently, right now, our electrical inspector can take you to any farm and point out which farms are growing marijuana. As in Hadley, the only things farms are being sold for to grow marijuana. Marijuana is being grown all around you, within you, with 12 plants in your neighbor's house. It needs to be looked at. The state has done a terrible job and dumped it in our lap. Our first attempt at fixing the medical marijuana in residential areas was zoning it in I1 and I2. Talking with all of the prosecutors and our Oakland County sheriffs in the substation, they are doing nothing to chase down anybody growing marijuana anywhere. They told them, hands off. If somebody buys a barn, we have them in horse country. If they buy a barn and start growing marijuana, you don't know it. You can't prove it. You have no reasonable cause to go in there. You can have 320 amp residential power services. We have eight of them in our barns north and west of us where our electrical inspector knows what's going on, but you can't do anything about it, nor can the prosecutor, nor can the state. So our first attempt at regulating where marijuana is grown, what we can do, we did. It's the medical marijuana. You heard people in the audience requesting us to look at marijuana regulating in certain zones, which I think we should put on the board and have further discussion with. But before that discussion is held, I would ask you each to talk to other communities, what's going on. It's a scourge. It's out of control. And the only way you can control it is through ordinance. Whether you like it or not, it's legal. It's illegal to grow certain amounts, but it's only illegal if somebody chases it down probable cause and makes an arrest, which they are not doing. It's on us. It's not on the state anymore. They've dumped it off. So that's my two cents for this evening.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Dunn to adjourn, a second by Treasurer Ferrari. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Oh, you said no? Oh, I thought you wanted to stay. Come on up, Robert. We're all done.